This conference will now be recorded.
Okay. Evening, everyone. The time is 7:30. This is the October 22, 2020 work session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us via video and teleconference. We ask that you please mute your devices this time so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be several opportunities for the public to be heard tonight, and we will advise we had to appropriate times. First on the agenda for the work session is the Open Public Meetings Act announcement. Michelle, if you could please read that.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the October 6, 2020 sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and our website.
Great. Thank you, Michelle. Please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Here.
Councilman O'Connell? Councilman O'Connell?
Do we know if Ed is, can we see whether Ed is there? He's having technical difficulties?
I don't see him.
Okay. All right.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso?
Here.
Councilman Stroch?
Here.
Councilwoman Wozinski?
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein?
Here. Thank you, Michelle. So this is public, this is the first of three opportunities for the public to speak. If anyone from the public wishing to speak, please somehow motion to me so you can state your name and address for the record and you can be heard. Not seeing anyone. I'll close the meeting. Next to the proclamation, I'm getting feedback. So if anyone, if you're, if you can mute your device, one, we won't hear your, your background noise. When it's time to speak, we will turn it on then. So next is the presentation for Chief Robert, Robert Herndon. And Amy, I'm going to invite Amy in a moment to, to read a proclamation. Before she starts, I just want to preface it that sadly, we lost a pillar to our community, Chief Robert Herndon, on September 26. As I said, Councilwoman Wozinski will be reading a proclamation in his honor. But for those who didn't know him, Chief Herndon served our country in Vietnam, and then the Allendale Police Department for 41 years, with 20, with 20 of those years as its chief. As a lifelong resident, he loved volunteering as a founding trustee of AFI, chairman of our Beautification Advisory Committee, a longtime planning board member for the benefit of Allendale. He was also a traffic safety police officer, and under his leadership as chief, the Allendale Police Department received the Bergen County Law Enforcement Professionalism Award in 1993, being the most professional police department within Bergen County, a practice that I believe has continued through today. He had no greater pride nor devotion than to his wife, two daughters, and six grandchildren. On behalf of the governing body, I send our deepest condolences to his family. And on behalf of Allendale's residents, I send our unending gratitude for all that he did for our town. The example of service that he set for our community will be a lasting testament to his life. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Amy, who will be reading a proclamation in, in his honor. Thank you, Amy.
Sure. Thank you. It's my honor to read this. Whereas former Allendale Police Chief Bob Herndon, and 73-year lifelong resident of Allendale, passed away on 9/26/2020. And whereas Chief Bob Herndon led a purpose-filled life of service to his town, state, and country. And whereas Chief Bob Herndon was serviced to his hometown for 41 years on the Allendale Police Department with 20 years serving as chief. And whereas Bob Herndon was married to the love of his life, Susan, for 49 years, who he met in high school, and has two daughters, Colleen and Ashley, and six beloved grandchildren. Whereas Bob Herndon served in the United States Army in Vietnam as a helicopter, door gunner with the 92nd Assault Helicopter Company. And whereas Bob Herndon received the Air Medal for Meritorious Achievements 13 times, and was later honored by New Jersey Governor Christie Todd Whitman with the New Jersey's Distinguished Service Medal. And whereas Chief Bob Herndon had several leadership appointments, including President of the Bergen County Police Chiefs Association, President of the New Jersey Association of Chiefs of Police, Board Member for Dare International, Member of the New Jersey Human Relations Commission, Legislative Committee Member of the International Association of Chiefs of Police, and Member of the Governor-appointed New Jersey Parole Advisory Board. And whereas Chief Bob Herndon was honored with the Chief's Achievement Award in 1993, and received the President's Award from the New Jersey State's Association of Chiefs of Police in 2008 throughout his two-decade career as police chief. Whereas Bob was well-known for his enviable and impeccable handlebar mustache that he wore so well, and was an enthusiast of good cigars, antiques, art, traveling. And whereas Bob was known by many in town as chief, his favorite title was "Pops" to his six cherished grandchildren, Aiden, Madeline, Grant, Andrew, Avery, and Gavin. And whereas the mayor and council of the borough of Allendale is forever grateful for his service to this country, to our community, and he will always be remembered by the residents of Allendale. May he rest in peace. It seems, you know, that we are losing a lot of great Allendale residents lately, and Chief Bob Herndon certainly fits into that category. I mean, he lived in Allendale for 73 years and worked for the borough, as, as Ari mentioned, for 41 years. The ceremony that was designed by his daughters was so touching and so beautiful, and hundreds of people were there to show their respects with, which is a testament to, to really who he was. I mean, he was a great guy. He was a friend, and he will be missed.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
I don't know if anyone else has anything that they, that they want to say. I will, we will be doing a moment of silence during the regular session after we stand to salute the flag. I'll ask everyone just to, to remain standing and observe a moment of silence.
Thank you, Amy and Ari. I mean, I can say I moved into Allendale 24 years ago, and Chief Herndon really was just such a nice part of Allendale. His, and you're right, his handlebar mustache and just his nice way of communicating certainly was, you know, a wonderful welcome. So he's an incredible person. So thank you for honoring him in this way.
We all probably, I mean, I grew up with him here, and I served on the planning board with him here. But as the first committee, when I was a council member, I don't know, 12, 13 years ago, my first, I was on public safety. And it was a little bit in awe of, of the police, I think I still am, and sitting there, and, and there he was. And he, he could, he, when he spoke, he, his words meant something. You hung on his words, and he, his smile could light up the room. And, you know, he just, I, it was an honor and a pleasure to have worked with him and to have been in his presence. And so that's from the heart. I know a lot of people feel that way as well.
I'd like to say something real quick if I may, Ari.
Of course.
So I had the pleasure and honor of sitting next to the chief, as I call him, with pleasure, on the planning board for many years. I also had a great time at his retirement dinner. It was an enjoyable night. And shortly after that, I just walked into AB&amp;G to pick up a takeout order, and he was in there, and he says, "Come on over." And he sat at the bar, and he bought me a beer, and he said, "Listen, I'm not the chief anymore. I can do this." So it was, and we just had a nice few moments, and we, I asked him, as everybody that knows me knows, I have a great interest in veterans. So of course, I asked him about his days in Vietnam. He was, he told me some interesting stories. And again, it was a pleasure and an honor and a privilege to know him, to serve with him on the planning board, and to get to know him a little bit after he retired. And I'm very sad to hear that he's gone.
Great, great stories.
This is Herndon. May I speak?
Of course, of course.
Hi. I just want to thank everyone, and thank Amy for doing such a great job. I appreciate all that you're kind words. And he really, really loved Allendale, and I appreciate everything that you've done. Thank you, Amy, and thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sue.
Okay. And as mentioned, we will have a moment of silence for Chief Herndon after we stand to salute the flag in our regular session. Moving on to the administration part of the work session, we'll start with the agenda review. We will be approving the minutes of the September 24 work in regular session, work in regular sessions. The minutes of their September 24 work in regular sessions.
They're not listed for tonight.
Okay, so.
Listed at the next meeting.
So, right, so no minutes, we're not approving any minutes tonight. Those will be for our next meeting. Introduction of ordinance 20-16, to amend, supplement, and revise Chapter 237, Article 1, entitled Property Tax Refunds for Disabled Veterans. New Jersey law provides property tax exemptions for 100% disabled veterans and eligible spouses who meet the state's criteria. This ordinance amends the section of our code pertaining to these exemptions and updates the qualification requirements and the terms by which borough may grant such refunds. Ordinance 20-17, amending, supplementing, or revising Chapter 181-1. It's not listed here. So Steve, I think this is the one that you've been working feverishly on for, for several months. Do you want to speak to this one?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So this is an amendment to an ordinance that we passed a few months ago that regulated short-term rentals, in other words, rentals of dwellings under 30 days. So kind of think Airbnb kinds of things. And there was a well-publicized story, it was actually national news, in Mawa in August, where an individual had been renting their pool, their, their residential pool in a very nice neighborhood in Mawa, too, and my dad. And did a story in the New York Post and other media outlets that it was renting for up to $10,000, and that his neighbors were not happy about it, but it wasn't illegal, and he was doing it. And I said, "This is not the kind of thing I think we should see in Allendale. It concerned me." So we're extending, we're proposing to extend the prohibit, prohibiting of 30-day rentals or less than 30-day rentals to, from dwellings to properties and pools and playgrounds and driveways. And we don't want to see people turning, you know, their house into a short-term business.
Great. Thank you, Stephen. I know, I know, because I'm on those emails. You've done a lot of work on this, back and forth with our Borough Council, many, many different versions, many different drafting of it. So both you and Councilman Stroch and the rest of Land Use Committee. So thank you for all your work on this. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have five resolutions listed for approval tonight. The bill list, I've gone over it. Matt?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. 20-226, covenant to comply with provisions of the Eternal Revenue Code 1986 and designate $3,780,000 of bond anticipation notes as qualified tax exempt obligation on September. Lissa, would you like to speak to this?
Sure.
Okay, great. Welcome our CFO extraordinaire, Lissa Mayer.
So these were notes that were prior notes. We rolled over and we added the 2020 capital ordinance of $857,000. The total of the note with water was $3,780,000. We had six bidders, and we had a net interest rate of less than half a percent, which is amazing.
Right.
Amazing. So that's it.
That is great. So thank you, Lissa, for all of your work, and our Bond Council from Royal McCarthy for their diligent work on that. 20-227, to appoint 2020 registrar, deputy registrar, and alternate registrar of vital statistics. We contracted with Northwest Bergen Regional Health Commission for Registrar and Vital Statistics Services back in January, but the New Jersey Department of Health is requesting that we officially appoint their employees by name for maybe services on our behalf. This resolution does just that, and I would also like to mention that their appointment is part of our contract. There'll be no additional or direct payments due as a result of these appointments, as a reason, as these appointments are covered under our contract. Next, on the consent agenda, 20-228, approve the contract, assistance for annual reassessment of all real property for tax equalization purposes, Associated Appraisal Group, Inc. For many years, the borough has appointed Associated Appraisal Group to work with our tax assessor, particularly on annual property reassessments. We're all very pleased with their work. Bergen County Board of Taxation and New Jersey Department of Taxation have granted approval for the annual reassessment program effective for tax years 2021 through 2025. And this resolution approves a contract for their assistance for these years. Thank you to Angela Matisse, our tax assessor, for all of our efforts, and we look forward to continuing to work with Associated Appraisal Group for the next several years. Last, on the consent agenda, 20-229, is to appoint a relief part-time hourly crossing guard, Robert Blanos, to ensure adequate coverage is available should be needed. The police department has requested that we, Robert Blanos be hired as a relief crossing guard. So we're happy to welcome Robert. I don't know whether Councilman O'Connell has joined us. I would invite him to speak.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, great. Thanks. Guess I'm here.
Great. So I know that this was discussed in our last public safety meeting. So we're appointing relief part-time hourly crossing guard. I just wanted to give you the opportunity to speak if that was, if you were inclined to add to that.
It was just a part-time crossing guard, just in case the situation arises where someone's sick or someone's on vacation or whatever, we have the access to a part-time crossing guard.
Great. Thank you, Ed. Under new business, 20-230, to authorize an emergency mandatory contract with Ambien Group for the ongoing 230 West Crescent Avenue Soil Remediation Project. This was added, this resolution was added to the agenda under new business, and either Ray or Amy, if either of you would like to speak to that, I, you know, it would be a good time.
I'll be.
Sure.
Okay.
Do you want me to speak to it?
Sure, Amy.
Yeah, I was going to talk about this in my report, but as I've been reporting, we're in the middle of this remediation on the 220-230 West Crescent property, and the digging has been done according to the SIP, the Site Implementation Plan. However, before we could do the backfill, we had to test. So once we tested, we actually found out there was some more hotspots, and we need to actually go back in again and dig further. The reason this is an emergency is because we need to have it done while we have our crew out there mobilized, and also there is a storm coming through, and we, we need to get the, the whole backfilled and the, and the entire site remediated. So this is going on as a change order. We are putting this in for our insurance, and hopefully, keep, your fingers crossed, everything will come out great in the next set of tests. But this is, this is kind of the environmental world, what we have, what we have to deal with. And it's, it's quite common, unfortunately, when you have a situation like ours of historic fill.
Great. Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
I would only add that where the project is in progress, as was just mentioned, and the work is being undertaken on an imminent basis, and particularly here where you're dealing with remediation, there are obviously some health and safety concerns, and there is a statutory protocol which is in effect in order to adopt a resolution like this. So in conjunction with both the Borough's Committee and our environmental consultant and our Borough Engineer, those protocols were adhered to, which allows you to put this resolution on the agenda this evening.
Great. Thank you, Ray.
Thanks, Ray.
So that is the end of our agenda review. 8:57, we have time for some committee reports. So we'll go in the normal order. Councilman O'Connell, would you like to give your report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We're going to have a law and public safety meeting next week. The topic will be Halloween, whether or not to close Dale Road. Once we have that meeting, I will email all the council members to get their input and decide after that what we're doing with the, the council's guidance. As far as calls go, there were 12,476 calls into headquarters, 911 calls, 1,204 fire department calls, 1,300, I'm sorry, 134, and evac has 303. The police department started taking applications for a new officer. They're up to 78. The limit's 100. The test is going to be October 20. We had two quarantined officers that should be back over the weekend. They had tests done and came back negative for COVID. We're waiting for a final clearance for tomorrow so they can get back to work over the weekend. And I think that's about it, Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ray. Thank you very much for your report. And I will be speaking to, my, I will be speaking to Halloween in the, the governor of the state has provided their, their rule, their guidance, and we are going to be posting that guidance on the website, and I'll be mentioning that in our report.
What I'd like to do is with the, after we get a word from the council, after the law and public safety meeting, I'd like to get something out on swift reach with the guidelines from the, the state as well.
Great. And, and, and I will, we will be posting those also on the website.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you. Councilman Sasso?
Sorry, I'm a little slow to get off mute. So the Land Use Committee has not met since our last meeting, but the highlight for the committee tonight is, of course, 181-1, if I think I have that correct, which we already discussed. I'm happy to answer any questions on that one. That will, this ordinance at the first reading will go, if I understand it correctly, to the Land Use Board, where they will review it. There's a 35-day period once they review it to make sure it's consistent with master plan. And then second reading, Michelle, Michelle Ryan, our clerk, and I spoke yesterday. And so I think it'll go for second reading November. I forget the date, but she can, she can, if it's important, she can mention it.
November 12.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. So that's it. That's all I have for tonight.
That's okay. Thank you so much. Councilwoman Holman, would you like to give your report? You're muted. It's still red.
I guess I really didn't want to give my report, but I do. So, you know, water always is busy. It's, it's so interesting. We've had several meetings with SUEZ. So let me think. I think things that want to make sure I update everybody on is that we are in the midst of doing fire hydrant flushing. So residents will be alerted, but there may be water that is being flushed from hydrant in order to make sure that we test each one of hydrants every year. Also, the Fairhaven tank will be getting a cleaning inside, so there will also be the draining out of the Fairhaven tank that will be upcoming. And again, residents will be notified that are around that area. If you, if anybody looked at the bill list from just looking at water, there was a purchase of multiple meters and other supplies that we need to keep the system running smoothly. So, you know, they are larger numbers, but that's something that we have to be doing. I attended a program that the NJDEP Water Quality Committee hosted. It was fascinating. It was a morning virtual meeting, and they talked about emerging contaminants and things that they would be forthcoming investigating at a New Jersey level, as well as what comes out of the EPA. So it's interesting, and it's great to be able to stay on top of that. Subsequently, Allendale, myself, Steve, and Ari had a meeting with the NJDEP team, which was also excellent. It was just good to have communication about how they're looking at implementing the PFAS, got the MCLs that will go into effect January, January of 2021. And I think we, you know, once again, established ourselves as a community that is forward-thinking, the fact that we had done the feasibility study for PFAS, the fact that we are actively learning about what, you know, what compounds they're exploring, and we're saying, well, should we start testing for those now so that we can be prepared? So I felt it was, you know, again, a right, a step in the right direction for Allendale, and I felt they were incredibly appreciative. And I've had multiple meetings with SUEZ on items pertaining to the maintenance of our system, and I thank them as well as my entire Water Committee team for being excellent to work with. And make sure people look in upcoming newsletters. We are going to have a second virtual water meeting where we will cover those emerging contaminants that we talked about, as well as the economics of water. So it will be fun, and nobody will want to miss it.
Great.
That's it.
Great. Councilwoman Wozinski, would you like to give your report? Great.
Four minutes. I can do it.
Okay.
Okay, 220-230, West Crescent. We are working through the, the pilots. We actually did, finished our review with our team, and we sent them off to Hampshire for them to review. We are going over the redevelopment agreements. We worked through that with our redevelopment agreement attorney, as well as our team. So that is on its way. We also have municipal facility agreement that we've been working with. So there's still a lot of agreements that have to be worked through. But the good news is that our plans are, have come to fruition. We are still on board to go to the land use on the 21st, and we are managing to get in a Vision Committee meeting on the 14th. So those who were, you know, part of the Vision Committee will get a sneak peek at the plans before they're presented on, on the 21st. I talked about the remediation. Tomorrow, they are going to be commencing again. So we are hoping to get everything out before the rain comes in. I believe there's a storm coming in on, on Sunday. We are working on the playgrounds. We got a new playground in town. We have an appointment that is next week that we're aiming to hopefully place the order so we can have the playground in by the end of the year. Our streetscape program is actually going very well. The sidewalks pretty much have, most of the demo, I think, is done on, on the one side. They started on from the Franklin Turnpike side going up to the AB&amp;G. The pavers have arrived, so they're going to actually be installed starting tomorrow. But it's, the, the subfloor of the concrete is actually nice and smooth. So luckily, people can walk, walk on them, and a lot of the merchants are not being affected by this. So because people, because they don't, we initially thought we were going to have to have like boards going in and out of all the doors, but the, the concrete is very passable. So we're very cognizant of our, of our merchants. So we're happy that, that, that is going well. It is a grant, 662,000. Just want to remind people of that, and we will be replacing all of the trees, and there will be more trees than there were in the past. So that's it for my report. One minute.
Hey, Ari, can I just add with one minute before we start, that Amy stops at all of these sites. She goes over.
I need a construction hat.
She goes over to 220-230. She makes sure things are going on. She goes, always is in town. I mean, check, she's calling me. Come look at these pavers. I'm not sure they're the right ones. I mean, it is truly, I don't, just don't know if everybody realized how much time she spends going to all of these different places. So thank you, Amy, and it's a pleasure to support you any way we can.
We're all a team. We're all a team. We do well together. We have a great, great 220-230 team, so.
I can affirm that. I saw her in Wal, in front of Walgreens yesterday, and then later I saw her on Myrtle walking towards 220-230. So yeah, she's, she's all in.
Make sure these people are in shape.
It's going to be a noble, instead of where's Waldo, where's Amy? Instead of where's Waldo, where's Amy?
I think it's eight o'clock, yes.
Okay, it's now eight o'clock, so I would request a motion to adjourn the work session.
Don't move, Holman.
Thank you, Liz, Matt, second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, don't go anywhere. Back by popular demand, it's now eight o'clock, and this is the October eighth, twenty twenty, regular session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us via video and teleconference. At this time, I'd ask the public to please mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be two opportunities during this meeting for the public to speak, we will advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. Meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the October sixth, two thousand and twenty sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Great, thank you. So now we're gonna ask everyone to rise to salute the flag, and as mentioned, once we're done saluting the flag, I would ask that you stay standing for a moment of silence in memory of Chief Robert Herndon.
United States of America.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief Herndon. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman? Here. Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso?
Here.
Councilman Strouch?
Here.
Councilwoman Wosinski?
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein?
Here, thank you, Michelle. Public comment on agenda items only, so open the meeting to the public for anyone who wishes to be heard on any item on the agenda. Not seeing or hearing anyone, we close the meeting to the public at this time. Introduction of ordinances. Twenty dash sixteen, which I reviewed in the work session, I would request a council member to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinance twenty dash sixteen and set the hearing for October twenty-second, twenty twenty, at eight P M or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allendale Municipal Building.
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, Liz. Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance and conduct a roll call.
This is ordinance twenty dash sixteen, an ordinance to amend, supplement, and revise Chapter two thirty-seven, Article one, entitled Property Tax Refunds for Disabled Veterans. Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wosinski?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next is ordinance twenty dash seventeen, an ordinance amending, supplementing, and revising Chapter one eighty-one dash one of the code of the Borough of Allendale. I would request a council member to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinance twenty dash seventeen and to set the hearing for November twelfth, twenty twenty, at eight P M or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allendale Municipal Building.
On behalf of the Land Use Committee, I'd like to offer one eighty-one dash one.
Great, thank you, Councilman Sasso, any second, request a second?
Second. Ouch.
Thank you, Jim. Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance and thereafter conduct a roll call.
Sure, this is ordinance twenty dash seventeen, an ordinance amending, supplementing, and revising Chapter one eighty-one dash one of the code of the Borough of Allendale. Councilwoman Holman?
I'd like to first thank Steve for, you know, when I read things and I questioned things about this particular ordinance, I thank you for responding and, and giving information, so thank you, and yes.
Okay. Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wosinski?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next is the consent agenda, which I went over review during the work session, I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Matt, second?
Second.
Second.
Great, thank you, Steve. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wosinski?
Yes.
Great, thank you, any unfinished business? New business, which we discussed during the work session twenty dash two-thirty, which we went over and Amy discussed, I would request a motion to approve Resolution twenty dash two-thirty.
So moved.
Thank you, Amy, second?
Second.
Thank you, Liz. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wosinski?
Yes.
Great, thank you, and now we will conclude, we'll finish up our committee reports. Councilman O'Toole?
Sir, Finance Administration and H R Committee met this week. We had a, where we took a look at the budget, where we currently stand. All things considered, we're in pretty good shape, there are some areas which have been impacted by COVID, such as revenues down a little bit from the commuter lot, since hardly anyone's commuting anywhere these days. We've also had a drop in dog licensing, so if you haven't licensed your dog yet, gotta get on that. But composting permits have increased, so. There are a few areas keeping an eye on, but overall, we're in pretty good shape. We also discussed some personnel issues, including ongoing contract negotiations and some housekeeping on a couple of policies, including a tax refund for disabled veterans, which we just voted on. Our new intern, Miles, has started working at Borough Hall, assisting in the clerk's office, I'm told he's doing a fine job, which anyone who sat down with him, I'm sure is not surprised. And I'm sure that everyone's noticed some of the new affirmative pieces being issued by the borough to keep the residents informed, I think going on around town, such as the election guide and the downtown streetscape piece. That's all thanks to John Gill, who has hit the ground running here and been producing these pretty sharp pieces.
Great, thank you so much, Matthew. Councilman Strouch? Like to give your report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Bernstein. Before I start my report, I also want to give my thanks, I guess posthumously, to Chief Herndon for all he did for Allendale. I regret that I wasn't able to express my appreciation in person, I expected him to be around much longer. I will miss him, and I'm sure Allendale will too. Excuse me. With regard to my DPW report, the twenty twenty municipal paving program has been completed. For those of you who haven't had a chance to drive over some of the recently repaved roads, it, it, they look great, and it's nice to know that we're still proceeding, even in these crazy times. Hillside Avenue, which is actually a county project, and thank you to Burton County for getting that done, was also completed this week. Looking forward to the upcoming winter, the snow plows on five of the DPW trucks have been installed. And the completion of the storm debris removal was done using a tub grinder in the back of the compost area. And the, the leaf pickup is scheduled to start this week. For those of you who didn't get the email from the borough listing when the, the weeks of the leaf pickup is happening, I encourage you to go to the borough website and to sign up for Constant Contact. Constant Contact is a way for the borough to easily disseminate information via email, and it's one of the many tools that Allendale uses to keep its residents informed. And speaking of Allendale's residents, I want to thank Allendale residents. I feel that they've been very patient and, and also cooperative as we've been working our way through these changing times. The businesses and the residents have had to alter their lifestyles and their expectations. And instead of complaining, they've offered constructive advice, and it's helped Allendale become a more efficient community. And it's probably one of the benefits of being a small town is that generally, one of the residents knows one of the members of the council and can easily find an avenue to make suggestions. And I also want to continue to thank the Allendale Borough employees, be they the field staff, which we consider, or we call DPW workers, as well as the office staff, the people working at five hundred West Crescent Avenue. They continue to find innovative ways to deliver excellent, what I consider, five-star world-class services. And, and as I said, difficult times, and with a limited budget, Allendale is a small town. We don't have a lot of commercial tax ratables as Param is, Mawa and Ramsey do. But still, we make our community a desirable community to live in. And so I want to thank everybody for all their efforts to make this possible. With that, Mayor Bernstein, I will end my report.
Councilman Strouch, thank you so much. Mayor's report, I do have some things to say. This year, holiday observers will be having a remote Halloween poster painting contest open to all pre-K to eighth grade Allendale residents. On this Saturday, from eight A M to twelve noon at the Red Barn, there will be a drive-through pickup of supplies, including poster paint and brushes. Posters should be completed at home and returned to Red Barn on Sunday between ten and noon. Judges will then select the winners, who will be contacted via email. Posters will be hung downtown as usual, and this year's prizes are Amazon gift cards, so good luck to everyone. Regarding Halloween, I want to add to what Councilman O'Connell mentioned. Halloween continues to be discussed at our Public Safety Committee meetings, which we will be having next week. Additionally, the state of New Jersey has put out their guidelines regarding celebrating Halloween, which we will be putting up on our website. So some of those highlights include the following. Face masks, face masks are strongly encouraged when celebrating Halloween in any form. Costume masks do not provide the necessary protection. Halloween activities are strongly recommended to be outdoors. Indoor gatherings must be limited to twenty-five people or twenty-five percent of a room's capacity, whichever is lower. House parties are discouraged. With respect to trick-or-treating, trick-or-treaters should plan on staying local and limiting houses on their route. Groups should only be current household members and no large gatherings. With respect to putting out treats for regular distribution of candies, candy should be arranged in a way that they can be easily grabbed without multiple pieces being touched. Limit contact and interaction with trick-or-treaters whenever possible. Any candy given out should be commercially packaged and non-perishable. Wear a face covering and regularly wash hands. So, well, as Councilmember O'Connor properly mentioned, a final determination on Dale Ave will be made at the next Public Safety Committee meeting. The recommendation, as we understand it from the police department, will be to close Dale, to not close it to traffic, so it would, it would be like any other street. But we will be discussing in committee, and we will, of course, advise and post appropriate guidance on, on the website. So I just want to add to what Councilman O'Connell said. COVID nineteen update, I want to remind everyone to remain vigilant with mask wearing and social distancing practicing. The, the number, it's not going away, there's been spikes in other parts of New Jersey, there's been spikes in other, in other states. We continue to be on the lower end of reported cases, and we want to keep it that way. So we will continue to stress that to the point of, of people not wanting to hear it, but that's, we're going to continue, it's, has not gone away, it's still out there, and we need to continue to do the right thing. Yearly hydrant flushing program, SUEZ Water has started conducting the annual hydrant testing and flushing program throughout the town. Zone one started this week, and over the next few weeks, they will work their way through all of our zones. Flushing will occur between eight A M and three P M, and customers are requested to use minimal drinking water during flushing in their area. Additional information and times can be found in the Allendale Newsletter, although information presented is subject to change. And updates will be posted to our website and notifications sent through Constant Contact. For questions, please contact SUEZ, eight-five-five-three-six-seven-six-seven-oh-eight. I know Councilman Strouch mentioned the curbside leaf collection program, thank you for, for mentioning that. I want to add to that, that it started this week on the west side, next week on the east side, and it will be continuing alternating weeks through the week of December seventh. DPW will only be picking up bag leaves in brown biodegradable bags, which are left curbside. Free bags will be available at the recycling compost area in the coming weeks. If anyone has questions regarding the schedule for your side of town, it's posted on our website, social media pages, and was sent out in the October newsletter. National Fire Prevention Week, this week is National Fire Prevention Week. Thank you to all of our volunteers and employees for keeping us safe, especially to the members of the Allendale Volunteer Fire Department and our fire official Kevin Todd, our fire inspectors Jeff Pick, Pickanich, and Jim Schultz, and Building Department Fire Subcolored Official Bob Connell. This year's theme is serving up fire safety in the kitchen, and we've put some links on our website with tips for kitchen and cooking safety, recommendations for creating a fire escape plan for families, as well as a link to the National Fire Prevention Association's website that has some fun games that can be played with kids to teach them about fire safety. General election, as you're all aware, there is an election, and this year, the governor and the New Jersey legislature has made the general election a mostly vote by mail one. Our clerk's office put together a comprehensive voter's guide, which can be found on our website, social media pages, and in the October newsletter, that helps explain this new process. And Matt, I know you, you mentioned that as well, one of the videos that went out. There's a lot of misinformation out there, especially on social media, so I encourage everyone and anyone with questions to reach out to our clerk's office to get the correct information. Other important information, out of an abundance of caution, the borough will not be hosting a flu shot clinic this year. Listen, final tax bills, last of which were mailed September twenty-fifth. Right? They're all out, okay. If you have a storm drain near your property, please clear the fallen leaves from it. This helps prevent water ponding and potential flooding issues. Matt, you mentioned the compost permits? No? Okay, good. The online application will be found on our website. The online application can be found on our website. 2020 Census deadline, has it been extended through October 31st? Census workers are knocking on the door for those who have not yet completed it. For those 19 and a half percent of Allen Dale residents that still haven't filled it out, please fill it out by going to 2020census.gov or calling the number 844-330-2020. We're mailing back the form that you received. It's vital to us to receiving the appropriate federal funds and determining our representation in Congress. So please fill it out. Our newsletter has been coming out, thanks to everyone who's participated and who has made that happen. It was mailed out a few days ago. Special thank you to Director of Communications, John Gill, for putting it together. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback on that. And we appreciate all the residents' feedback and suggestions that we keep receiving. And if you have any questions or you want any comments, please keep them coming. You can address your questions to info@allendalenj.gov. So that is the end of my report. Now to our professionals, et cetera. Right?
Thank you, Mayor. In addition to the items reflected on this evening's agenda, we've worked with clerk's office on several of the Oprah requests that they have received, although they do the laboring or by themselves, thanks to Michelle, participating with Mr. Kissner in certain personnel items. And as was mentioned, labor negotiations are proceeding. I think we have another meeting scheduled for next week, I think Wednesday, if I recall right. But as Councilwoman Wosinski mentioned, there are many contracts associated with the 220, 230 project, which have been worked on in earnest since our last meeting. Great, that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Michelle?
Thank you. Just the clerk's office, we are busy preparing for the upcoming general election. We received yesterday 2,000 provisional ballots. There are eight big boxes, so we've been answering a lot of questions. Residents are calling in with great questions, so we've been helping them as well. And if there's one message that I can put out, which is being promoted by all of Bergen County's election divisions, there are 18 official ballot drop boxes placed throughout the county. The closest ones to Allen Dale being Ramsey, Wycoff, and Ridgewood. And that's really what the county is encouraging and recommending voters, how voters complete the voting process.
Right.
We've also created a tab, thanks to Tyler Yakarino, our webmaster, and John Gill, on our homepage called 2020 General Election. So we've posted some election information there and we'll be continuing to post important updates, as well as putting it out on the borough's Facebook page. We will be open on Tuesday, October 13, which is the last day to register to vote in this upcoming election. So we will be accepting paper registrations until 9:00 PM. Also, registration can be done online now on the state's website, which is state nj.us. And we will all, since we're here, we're also going to process any compost, pet licenses, garage sales, anything that may come into our office. And I just wanted to give everybody an Oprah request update. Does anybody want to take a guess where we're at?
Year to date?
Yes, but first, in 2019 to date, we were at 390.
I'm going to guess 365.
510.
Okay, well, Councilwoman Holman is the winner. She's the closest. I don't have a prize for you, but we're at 494 and counting.
Councilwoman Holman, come on down. You're the next contestant.
And we'll be meeting the total for 2019.
Right, yeah, the amount of time spent, we've discussed this ad nauseam, but the amount of time spent, it could be spent doing other things, you know, it's your tax dollars. I don't want to, I'll get off my soapbox. Let's just say the amount of time and money spent.
Yeah, but I do want to, it's not just the clerk's office. It is every department. It's our, you know, Mr. Wiss and his office. So I just want to thank everybody because it really is a team effort. It's painful, but it's a team effort. Thank you.
And thank you. Thank you to you, to you and Tatiana for all your work. This, as I said, you know, this doesn't happen organically. This is a lot of work and I know you're working nonstop to make it happen. Thank you. John Gill deserves his credit. Tyler, for all the work that you, you know, are getting this stuff out there. You know, we're sending it to you at all hours and you're getting it done. Thank you for your help there. Listen, anything you'd like to add? No? Okay. So the very last time, I'd like to open the meeting to the public for anyone on any matter. Not seeing, not hearing anyone, closing meetings to the public. We've reached the end of the meeting. I would request a motion to adjourn the regular session.
Don't move, Tommen.
Thank you, Liz. Thank you, Amy. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone. That's the end of our meeting.
All right, good night, everyone.
Good night.